Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, October 28th, 2021, Renner County School Board Meeting. So, Madam Clerk, would you call the robe, please?
Mr. Wommer.
Here.
Mr. Linden.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Greenway.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Yes, ma'am. If y'all wouldn't join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of this country, to the Constitution of this world.
Thank you. Move on to announcements of changes in the agenda. I think we have any... Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Wommer.
Yes.
Mr. Linden.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Greenway.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moretz.
Yes, ma'am. We don't have anything formally under presentation and recognitions, but I do understand that we've got some people here from, some kids here from Troop 352 out of Salem. They meet at Locust Grove United Methodist. I've got Seth and Zach. Y'all here this evening? Hey, welcome.
One quick question. Is that Seth in the front? I see the 1970... Oh, 1973 Pink Floyd sweatshirt. Is that your dad's? I thought maybe it was a retro sweatshirt from your dad's days back in the 70s. I like it.
That's awesome.
Off the wall.
All right. All right, we'll jump into item 4.01. We've got hearing of citizens and delegations. So, I've got a few speakers this evening. So, just run down the, run down the decorum for that. Each speaker will be given three minutes to comment when speaking as an individual representative. I cannot defer your time to anyone else. So, if you've been here before, there's a timer up there, and it's just like a stoplight, green, yellow, red. So, we ask that all comments be directed to the board as a whole, not to individual board members. There's no debate between speakers and board members. So, with that being said, I have, P or D Dobbs? Mrs. Dobbs, welcome. If you, and if everyone, when they come up there, just state your name and address for the record. We'd greatly appreciate it. And once again, welcome.
555 Peters Creek. What I wanted to talk today, my topic was vaccinations. I didn't know much about it, but I did know that COVID-19 for kids has a 99.9% recovery rate. So, I thought, I need to look into this. So, I checked the government and I checked CDC's lines itself, and I found out that there's a VAERS line. This is called the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System. And I found out that healthcare providers are required by law to report these. And I found out that there's neurological issues like Guillain-Barre, where you can have situations like you can't walk, you have tremors, things like that, encephalitis, where you've got, the brain is swelling and it's very bad, convulsions, seizures, strokes, anaphylaxis, where you can't breathe. And this is the CDC's, by the way. This is an acute MI, an acute MI, where you have a heart attack, miscarriages, autoimmune disease, where your body fights itself, thrombocytopenia, where you have blood clots, arthritis. The bottom line of this is that these are side effects, and we know nothing at all about these, about the ingredients in this. I had to get an anti-inflammatory, and it was just basically an aspirin. This is the information I received on it, two pages, double-sided. Yet, for this, we know absolutely nothing that's in this, except aborted fetuses, babies. So, the analysis that certain doctors are having, because they're concerned about their patients, is that they are evaluating this. They are finding, they are finding parasites and they're finding metals, where people can literally, at the site, put a magnet there and it's sticking. So, the bottom line is, you want to, you might ask, well, there's probably not very many of this, but there's 800,000 of these VAERS. These are not statistics, they are people. And the bottom line is, the Nuremberg Trials were held, and it was determined that nobody could put things in somebody that we didn't know what they were. Just yesterday, the FDA decided for three-year-olds to give this vaccination, and they said at the conclusion, we'll never know what's going to happen until we give it to them. Bottom line is this, you five have an awesome privilege. You have an awesome responsibility, and that's to protect our kids. Either we're talking about healthy, or we're talking about this. I would ask that you not do something that you're going to regret down the road. Be honorable, take care of our country, and most importantly, take care of our kids. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Dobbs. Next up, I've got Mr. Brown. Welcome back.
Good evening. Chad Brown, 2557 Russell Drive. I am here tonight also to address my concerns with vaccine mandates for our children, which seem all but inevitable at this moment. And you soon will be faced with how to respond to this. It will be your responsibility as your local, our local representatives, not the governors or presidents. President Biden has said it's the school board's responsibility to set COVID policies, and that's one thing that I actually agree with him on, not for political expediency in Florida, but because of the principle of subsidiarity. Terry McAuliffe has said, if the CDC says the vaccines are safe, then he wants every child to be vaccinated. Mandating vaccines goes against the highest, most revered laws in our country. It's a violation of our Constitution. It's a violation of the principles espoused in the Declaration. It's a violation of Title VII of the American Civil Rights Act, and raises questions of desperate impact. Not only is it unlawful and un-American, it's a policy decision that's not based on good science or rational assessment of safety, efficacy, and necessity. This is a parental decision. I do believe in parental rights and involvement. Sorry, Terry McAuliffe, sorry, Merrick Garland, it's our kids, our tax dollars. I do not trust the administration of these shots down the hallway from my child. I do not want them in our schools at all. Without direct parental oversight, I'm concerned mistakes with potentially lethal consequences could happen, and who will be liable. Families and citizens who choose not to take the COVID vaccines have valid reasons for doing so. Many are making this choice for religious reasons. The available vaccines, as mentioned, just have use, all make use of fetal cell lines of an aborted child in their development, production, or testing. But our relationship with God encompasses every aspect of our lives. We have been created in his image and likeness. We've been endowed with an intellect and a will, so that we can reason and make decisions for the well-being of our family that are in line with our faith. When we look at the data, we see that of the 73 million children in our country, fewer than 700 have died from COVID. Subjecting children to these risks fails the necessity test. When we look at the VAERS data, we find that there have been over 600,000 adverse events from vaccination reported, including over 8,000 deaths. In just nine months, deaths from COVID vaccine have far outpaced deaths from any other vaccine over a 30-year period. Adverse events from the COVID vaccines now account for 50% of all events reported across a 30-year time period. This makes the COVID vaccines the least safe of all vaccines. These are not like the attenuated live virus vaccines for measles and lumps that are typically required by schools, which you take once or twice as a child, and you are protected for life. The COVID vaccines are only effective for about six months, rendering them the least effective. Further, even the CDC website says the measles and lumps vaccines are not needed if you show evidence of immunity, which brings me to my next point. We are completely ignoring considerations for natural immunity in all of these decisions and discussions on mandates. Finally, people simply don't trust the government. The questionable origins of the virus, the ever-changing flip-flop guidance from public health officials, the bold-faced lies, the hypocrisy, the politicization, the censorship, propaganda, bribery, and coercion surrounding these vaccines have obliterated all trust. After all of this, we're reminded again that we must trust in God rather than man, according to the sanctity of our conscience. Families are now being placed in desperate situations due to these mandates, as unvaccinated parents are being forced out of their jobs, shut out of public safety nets, and blocked from further employment. Now conscientious parents may be faced with the decision of pulling their children from public school or submitting them to what amounts to medical experimentation. This is a form of genocide. It's an economic genocide and a social genocide. If you believe, like I do, that this flawed, fallen human existence, with all its joys and tragedies, is really a test, then you know we cannot stand by silently. God made us free for a reason. We're free so that we can freely choose to love and serve Him alone, to pick up our cross and follow Him. We must defend our children and neighbors from tyrannical forces of oppression. Please respect parent choice and keep the COVID vaccines out of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, next up, I have Mrs. Fenzel. Welcome.
My name is Ella Fenzel. I live at 2507 Charmar Road, Renner, Virginia. In October, I determined to call my school board, each of you members, and I want to thank the three members who took the time to return my call and spend a lot of time speaking with me. However, after leaving five messages with my own school board member, he never acknowledged my calls and never answered my questions. I found this a little bit disturbing. I don't know another means except coming here and speaking to you, but not being able to interact. If there's another way to do this, other than a phone call, I would appreciate if you would let me know how to do it at a later time. And just a reminder, that you do work for me. I pay your bills. I hire and fire you. And I really would appreciate if you would communicate with me. And I want to say that I really appreciate what has been said thus far. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a report by Student Advisory Council. Ms. Taylor, welcome. How are you? Great.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Nicely.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Nicely. The Student Advisory Council held our annual reception at the Salem Museum on October 7th. We talked about things we would like our council to speak on this school year, and talked amongst our own schools about concerns and positive things going on throughout our county. Our council has not met again since then, so I do have nothing to report to you. Thank you all for your continued support of the Student Advisory Council and allowing the SAC the opportunity to give our input. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, we've got the consent agenda of a motion to approve consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Womber?
Yes.
Mr. Linden?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Item 8.01, we have update on strategic plan adoption process. Mr. Williams. How are you?
Mr. Chair, members of the board. Virginia state law requires school boards to review school strategic plans biennially and conduct a public hearing to get stakeholder feedback on any proposed revisions. We introduced several months ago to you the draft of the plan, and so as introduced previously, the new plan is a complete revision designed to better align with our C-Change strategic framework. In this meeting, we're going to basically, you know, start the process and let you know that this process is starting, introduce the draft into the public record, which it is, and in the November 11th meeting, we'll have the public hearing. That'll be our next board meeting, and then that, along with any revisions that may come out of the feedback that we get, will be hopefully up for adoption at the December 9th meeting, and then we'll meet our state requirements under 22.1-253. And just to remind you, our school strategic plan is very different than it has been in the past, because we're doing, we're going through a process to align it with our C-Change framework, and our C-Change frameworks really are, you know, part of our guiding documents in terms of where we're trying to go with the division. And so, so trying to align it to that, and our goals to that, is what we're really trying to do. We're trying to break away from just having departments say, "This is what I'm doing," and be in isolation, basically trying to unify the school division into a common direction. And as part of that, and as part of our messaging, just to recall, we really tried to boil down the goals of that into a single pager, which is, you know, on page seven of the attachment that you have, and that's something that's never been done before, you know, trying to give something to the public, to our stakeholders, that's different, that's more approachable than the about 100-page document we had in the past. Now, we have a, still have a huge document, and, you know, if any of you want to peruse it, we can certainly give it to you again. It's about 50 pages that has lots of details, but the big picture is, you know, we're really trying to, trying to make our communication more concise through this plan. So, so this starts that process, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Mr. Williams, how, as far as, maybe expand on some internal groups that we've, you know, and staff that have been working on this?
Sure.
I mean, yeah, I'm sure principals and, you know, select group of teachers and things of that nature, but maybe for the good of the, good of the public, it'd be good to know who, you know, who's been working on this, you know, draft, and then who will kind of be coordinating with, you know, with the public on it as well.
Absolutely. So, we've, we've started this, actually, the whole process several years ago, when we were working on the C-Change framework, and, and so everything's rooted in that process that really came out of the work that was done with our CIA Committee, which is our Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee, and that's a committee that consists of parents, teachers, and administrators from every school in the county, and that was a several-year process that led us through to that document, and the goals were primarily designed by teachers and administrators with feedback from those committee, from that committee also, and it's, you know, again, trying to, you know, to bring our stakeholder committees together, but we're also trying to get feedback from a broader spectrum, even right now, if you go onto our website, you'd see that we have a feedback page on our website, on the front page of the website right now, that has this document linked and a feedback area for the community. So, anyone who wants to respond, we've had, I think, close to 50 folks who have responded so far. It's been up for a few days, not too terribly long, but, but we're getting, even getting feedback from students, which is, you know, pretty neat. That's something, you know, they've never looked at before. So, so we're trying to, to reach out to as many people as we can, and like we said, we've got the public hearing at our next meeting, and we'll certainly take in any more feedback we can get.
Yes, Mr. Womber.
Mr. Williams, are there any significant changes since the 2019 plan that you want to highlight or mention?
The, the main changes are basically in terms of its alignment, in terms of its alignment with the, with the C-Change framework, which means we're focusing on balance and deeper learning, we're focusing on school and classroom climate, we're on learning culture. We really want our schools to be places that children feel comfortable to be in, where they feel safe, where they, where they have a really positive learning environment, and safety, not just in terms of physical safety, but also intellectual safety as well, I mean, just the feeling that they belong in our schools. And so, that's a big piece. It's not just about, you know, teaching nowadays isn't just about the learning, it's also about, you know, the, the soft skills they learn, and just about the academic piece. It's about the soft skills they learn, it's about, you know, learning to work with each other, and, and so, you know, trying to have a, you know, a place that's responsive to students, a place that works for students, a school division that works for kids. I think you'll find that this is a very student-centered document. It's not about what central office thinks is the next great thing, which is, you know, I think, you know, a pretty, pretty powerful change. And I will tell you, I've been here a long time, and, you know, I know that the previous versions have very much been department-based. It's been, you know, "What is my department planning on doing for the next couple of years?" And I'll throw that in the document and forget it's there and move on. It was not as living a document as it could have been, and it also didn't have all the groups focused in one direction, and I think that's, that's pretty powerful. So, also, we've got support tools and services, you know, saying what they can do to help deeper learning. So, it's, it's, again, it's not just what they plan on doing in terms of facilities and all that, it's how does that relate to the student? How does that relate to deeper learning? And then we also have a resilience piece, which is kind of added on, but it's basically, you know, when things go wrong, which they always do, COVID or something else, how can we build the division so that we can weather those storms more easily? And so, again, trying to be good stewards of the taxpayer money, good stewards, you know, to our community, who, you know, who we do work for. Yeah, so, you know, so we are trying to, you know, to be responsive there as well, and make sure that, that our kids are looked after.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, is it fair to say that at this point, this document is kind of like a 30,000-foot view of our vision for the next two years?
I'd say what you have in front of you certainly is the 30,000-foot view. There are very well-designed, measurable goals and stra, measurable strategies underneath it, that, that we've built out, and, you know, those are, those are very, you know, specific to, you know, to the various pieces of the C-Change framework. So, you know, we tried to say, you know, the real rub was, you know, do we give the minutia? Do you want the minutia, or do you want the big overview? You got the big overview today, but there's about 50 pages worth of minutia underneath it, and we'll happily share that with you if you want.
I think that's the important point of the presentation, you know. You start with a, with a vision, which is what this is, and then through your CIA and through other administrative routes that you have, it boils down to the school, to the classroom, to the student, because at the end of the day, all this vision that you have here, as you suggested, is built around the student.
And that's another thing to point out, that when we made the strategic plan, the schools also build their school strategic plans as basically in alignment with the division's strategic plan. So, again, it comes down that way. So, the school plan is aligned, the principal's personal goals are aligned, we meet to discuss those goals at the school level, and even at the teacher level, the teacher goals very often are aligned as well, all the way up. So, so again, just trying to make sure that what we say we're going to do, we actually do.
And I think that was a point I was going to make, you know, a plan is only good if it's implemented, monitored, and adjusted, and I think that you have a track record of doing all three of those things in the position that you, that you hold, and I'm very comfortable suggesting that this is a good starting point for the community to touch in if they haven't already. Mr. Ray?
We prompted you to start talking tonight, Mr. Williams, so.
You could have been short if you'd wanted.
I know the division prefers every student to be opportunity-ready. Could you pull that up and go over those eight, eight communication profile?
The profile of a graduate?
Yeah, profile. And if you could just highlight those a little bit for the folks that are watching, the folks in the audience that may not be able to see it very well.
Absolutely. So, so not only is the C-Change framework one of our guiding documents, we also have the profile of a graduate, and we're working behind the scenes right now on ways that we can operationalize the profile of a graduate, essentially make sure that what happens in our school division leads to our students being opportunity-ready. And again, we can talk about being opportunity-ready, and we can say, "Oh, yeah, we hope our kids are going to be opportunity-ready," but right now, behind the scenes, we're working on ways where we can actually try to measure that, and, you know, we, we hope to have something that, that'll go before you in the moderate future that'll relate to that. So, there's a lot going on around the profile of a graduate, and the profile of a graduate, there's eight pieces of it. Of course, we've got the, we've got the five Cs: communication, collaboration, critical thinking, citizenship. We actually, I don't know if I said creativity, but we, we actually have been talking a lot about that, and we've got some, some folks we're working with to help us in that process, and we've been doing some research as well on what, what employers want, and I actually just talked to our Leadership Academy earlier this week about that, and, you know, one of the, the top thing employers are looking for in terms of skills is problem-solving. That's our critical thinking C right there. You know, we have to develop that in our students. That's not necessarily, you know, SOL 3.56, you know, but, not that that exists, but, but anyway, but it is crucial, that's crucial for our kids, because we know that's what our, our employers want. So, we're trying to, again, you know, look at research on what employers want, bring that down vertically to say, "How does this impact our students," or "How can we prepare students at each level, even down to elementary, and say, 'How can we get them ready for that? How can we develop those skills?'" And that's, that's what this is all about. So, you've also got centeredness, which is basically the whole child piece. It's, it's, you know, we don't want, just want you to, you know, have all this knowledge and skills, we also want you to be a healthy, balanced, you know, person, you know, probably better than I am at this point. And, you know, the competence, we do acknowledge that there's things our kids need to learn that are concrete things, you know, that there are some facts that, that where if you don't know them, you won't be able to put a conversation or a news piece into context. And so, there, we acknowledge that there are still things beyond these skills through the competence piece that students need to know. And then career plan is that we don't want folks moving into the next phase of their life after Roanoke County and not having a plan in place, not being knowledgeable about their options. We don't want the aimless drifting going on after they graduate. We want our kids to have a plan to get out of their parents' basements and to get off the payroll. I've said that before, I mean it. We want it off the payroll. So, so again, that's, that's part of our profile, and, and so, you know, that's, it's what we believe, and, and so we are going to be working very hard to operationalize that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Item 8.2, Dr. Stigall, who's going to give us a COVID update. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Nicely, have another COVID update. We've got some good news, I hope, that we're seeing our numbers change a little bit in the right direction. So, this is the first chart we always look at, and it's the daily case count, and this was as of yesterday, and you can see on the far right, we are certainly trending downward, which is a great sign to see. This is the transmission level, October 17th through the 23rd. We're still at high transmission, but I am hopeful, you can see that we're at 8% positivity, so that should be dropping down to substantial fairly soon, so I'm hopeful we'll see a drop out of high transmission in the next week or two. New cases per 100,000, this is October 17th through the 23rd. Again, you can see the trend downward, hoping that that continues in that direction. We don't have any indication that that won't continue to decline. Positive cases in the schools, these are the cases that we have on our dashboard, and you will see that the, the chart on your left is from last week, the chart on your right is from this week, so you can see there just by looking at color that that is definitely decreasing the number of cases. We were at, we were having 30 to 40 cases a day, and now we're down to, you know, 6, 8, 10, so our averages are definitely coming down. There are some days we are only having, like today, we had six, and there have been days we've only had three positive cases throughout the entire division, so we are definitely seeing a decrease. Positive cases by date for all schools, you can see that is, we're still, that's September on the left and October on the right, and you can see that we are starting to come down a bit there as well. Oh, no, this one, yeah, positivity by date, that is September and October. In-school exposures by school, and you can see there that we have the numbers, there's still been, if you have an outbreak, and it's not an outbreak, but if you have a case in a school and there's been lots of students quarantined, you're going to see the exposure number go up, and that is what has happened in some areas. We did just have to put out quite a few students who were connected to a, a daycare center that happened to come into the school and impacted several classes. So, we have had some, some high exposure numbers, but it was class-specific. Total quarantines by date for all schools, you can see that across UC September and October, and this is the good news, it doesn't jump off this page as much as it could. Back in September, we were averaging 500 or more quarantined students every single day, and lately, we've been right above 200. We actually got down to 211 one day, so I think today we dropped up, jumped up to about 237. So, we have almost cut our quarantines in half, so that is, is a really good sign. Additional measures taken, these are the list of our schools that we have had to close classrooms, because the cases, they are all currently have returned back, and we do not have any classrooms that have been closed recently. So, the Community Vaccination Center, I shared this with you last time, it is a new site that they, the Health Department has, does that, well, has built out at Valley View at the old Sears Building, and they, this clinic is open for the community to come to get vaccinations. The clinic is open Monday through Saturday from 10 to 8, and it's going to be open, they think, at least through December. We are encouraging our staff during the early dismissal times in the workdays that they can schedule appointments and go get their booster shots or their vaccinations, whichever they need, if they choose to do that. So, this is the site that's kind of taking over as the location for vaccinations in the Valley, and school staff do qualify for boosters if they're interested in that, because... And school staff do qualify for boosters if they're interested in that, because they are considered a high-contact job, so they, occupation, so they can qualify for that booster if they choose to do that. The new information is that ages 5 to 11 COVID vaccines may be made available. This was on the Health Department website, and they're sharing this information for us to get out to our families, that if the FDA and the CDC, after they have, if they fully sign off on the authorization, the doses will be made available at this site. And this site is where parents, if they're interested in getting that vaccination for that age group, would need to get appointments and take their children there. We will not be holding any vaccination sites on school property. We will be asking them to go to the Health Department to do that at that location. They've also added some child-friendly areas at that location just for this reason. So if this age group is approved, that will be the site that we will be directing parents to go to if they choose to vaccinate their children. Okay. That's all. Any questions?
Oh, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. And all of these are voluntary, whatever they decide personally they want to do.
Absolutely. We decided that at this age group, it wasn't, the Health Department really doesn't, they don't have the resources to bring it into schools like we did with the older population. And at this age, we feel as if parents probably want to go with the children to those sites, and that's probably in the best interest of everybody.
One other good question, I don't know if you know the number, maybe, Dr. Nicely, you know what our current ADM is?
I don't know the exact number.
13,000 something?
Yeah, we were, I asked how that is, but we're right at 13, 2, 37, I think, then in September. I actually had it memorized, but it's right there.
Couple hundred over projected.
Yeah, couple under over what we project, which is good.
Yeah, it's definitely right, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up, item 8.03, you've got Mrs. Peterson coming up to give us amendments to ESR 2 and ESR 3 grants to accommodate premium pay. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Let me get this set up real quick. So as you know, we presented the ESR 3 grants at the end of August, and then brought it back forward to the school board to take a look at appropriations the first work session in September, during which time discussions ensued on providing a premium payment to all employees. The following work session, Dr. Nicely presented some specific reasons for the premium pay option, and also some specific items that we could reduce or shift around in the ESR 3 grant. Since that time, we have done many reconciliations, many reviews, discussions with VDOE and whether or not we could put the premium pay in the ESR 2 and ESR 3 grants. And I have for you in your packets on your dais and in school board docs, the summary of adjustments to the ESR 2 and ESR 3 grants that would free up funds for premium payment. So if you look at page three, or page two, that begins the discussion on the ESR 2, and it shows a summary that I will review. And then page three are the specific line items of that grant that was brought forth. I've got lettered tick marks that go between the two, so that you can easily match the summary with the specific line items. So let's get into the details. The largest chunk of funds that we will free up out of the ESR 2 grant will include funds that we're going to move into the ESR 3 grant. We're going to, we would request your permission to move the Green Valley School Counselor into the ESR 3. We have funded two years in ESR 3 and one year in ESR 2. By doing that move, it will put all of that funding in one place, and just be a lot easier to track. And free up funds here. The next group, the special education staff, there's quite a few lines there that can all go towards unfinished learning. We also have, a lot of our teachers are funded out of the ESR 3. And so if we just take that entire chunk and move it over to ESR 3, that will free up additional funds here while allowing us to continue to meet our 20% requirement in the unfinished learning portion of ESR 3. On the same note, there is an intervention and supplementary instruction line that would go towards unfinished learning that we can move into the ESR 3, that 20% amount as well. So all of those are just kind of shifting the funds to where it would be easier to track them, and put like funds with like funds. On the same note of getting like funds with like funds, we left a small amount of cleaning costs in ESR 3. We have a larger amount in ESR 2, so we would like to just move those over to the ESR 2. Not losing any funds, just shifting them around. We did a similar type of shift to pull out $23,700 from ESR 2 back when we had the add-on grant for facilities. Initially, the add-on grant, we put in there touchless faucets. However, that did not come to be. Rather than purchasing touchless faucets, the school division purchased the touchless paper towel dispensers. And that would qualify under the grant that we had been awarded, so we shifted these funds to the other grant in order to free up funds here. As you can tell, there's a lot of shifting of funds.
Is that, I mean, is that, I mean, we can just do that, just flip them around? I mean, how does that work?
It is, it is.
We couldn't spend them within a timeline, we couldn't do this, we couldn't do that, but now we're just moving them around?
We are moving them around to provide for maximum flexibility in using the funds the way the school board wants them. One of the other items on this list, you will see, that drove a lot of this funding, back when the grant started to come out, VDOE had put forth a memo stating that thou shalt spend down all of ESR 1 before you can access ESR 2. And so then, you're going to get into another pot of money, about $81,000 that was shifted back and forth between ESR 1 and ESR 2, so that we could spend down the ESR 1 funds early enough. Now, after we did all that moving, they came back and said, oh, I think they realized the writing was on the wall, that this funding streams were going to continue to come to pass, and they really didn't want to tie our hands the way that they did. And so they relaxed that requirement. However, we had already started the shifting to ensure that we could spend down one in order to access the funds in the other.
I don't even, I mean, it's just beyond my comprehension, but I guess if we can do it, we can do it. I don't, it just, all these conversations we've had about what we can spend this money on, we can't do that, we can't, we were told we can't do this, we can't do that. It was only earmarked for this or that, and it's got to be spent by this date or that date. And now we're saying, well, we're just switching them around and moving them over, and I don't know, maybe, I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult, but it just blows my mind that now we can just push these funds around to different places. Am I the only, I mean, did that strike anybody else?
I guess the only thing I would think is there's a deadline for 2 and 3. I mean, you keep swapping around, but is it going to be a deadline? We have to do like we did at ESR 1? Or is it, is there a deadline?
No, the funds will expire September 2024. Once we, and one of the purposes for how this came to be, like I said, first off, the VDOE came down and demanded that we spend one pot of money before we could access the next. And then they came down with all these add-on grants that you applied for, and they had to be spent down as well. So we were just trying to figure out, how could we spend all of the oldest grants first? It was all approved funding, all of it. We didn't spend anything that wasn't approved.
Well, let me say, I'm not directing these comments at you personally. It just, if this is, and I'm sure it's within the guidelines, and I guess VDOE is the one that tells us what we can do and what we can't do with these funds. And so, just shocking to me that we get these funds and they tell you what you can do, and then they say, well, if you haven't spent them, let's just move them over here. Well, if you haven't spent those, this is a higher-level deal, but it just strikes me as kind of crazy. I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm the only one that sees, but it just, physically, I'm thinking, we get these monies, and we're told you can't do this, you can't do that, and you got to spend them by this date. That, I guess, comes and goes, and we've still got a little bit of money. And now they say, just push it into that one, and you can do what you want with that one, based off the guidelines we give. I don't know how we keep up with this. I mean, there's no way us five board members can understand this. I don't think, in the time that we're allotted, which, you know, and I appreciate, I'm glad we've got you, so, but it's just, it's just hard to fathom. I mean, only in government can this be so difficult to understand, I think. I just, I'm not trying to be difficult with you, but you know what I'm saying? I mean, we've done, we go through every work session, every work session, and we're told what these monies are for, and what they can be spent on. And only to come back now and say, well, we really didn't have to, we could push them here, push them there, and we can do that, sounds like to me, we ought to spend them on what we need. And if we, you know, some things like, and I know where you're headed, and I appreciate that, and all the staff working on getting this item done for the teachers. But, you know, when these kids need remediation, to me, I just can't believe we can't put everything we've got into it to get these kids remediated. I'm sorry to be rambling, it's just frustrating to see how this moves around. It's a moving, moving target, so I'm just expressing that, but I'm going to be quiet, and we'll just keep moving on.
Just a point of clarification, none of the regulations have changed, they're all the same, and we are complying with every single one of them. It is a typical process when we have a multi-year federal grant to change how we use them. And our departments submit amendments as they need to. That is a normal process in the grant lifespan. What you're seeing here is a condensed timeline in order to meet the needs that you requested. So we are just scrambling to find the correct way that we can shift the funds within the allowable guidelines in order to provide what the school board desires.
And I appreciate that. I'm not, I can tell there's frustration, I get it. I'm not, I just, it's just at a higher level, hard to understand how they put these things in place. And then, again, I'm not going to keep rambling, but, I mean, I'm shocked that nobody else would be wondering how this interpretation changes, you know, from month to month, or, you know. Anyway, thank you.
Mr. Williams?
I think Mr. Greenway has worked extremely hard for the past three months with 2 and 3. 3 being the latest one with $11.2 million, you know, and we got, we went through the process, you know, with all the inputs, parents, staff, everyone that had a voice in that. And I think I made the comment then, and I think the comment then really rings true now, you know, that over a period of time, your goals change, and over a period of time, I think people have begun to realize in the government that they're making decisions about what is and what isn't acceptable. I think they've come to understand that we have a bigger problem than they thought about. And, you know, leaving money on the table is not going to solve our problem. So however they loosen up the requirements, you know, for moving funds or spending funds, it's doing us a favor. And I don't think any of us want to leave any money on the table. I know when we had the economic turn down, you know, 10, 12 years ago, we didn't have federal funds, you know, to keep the schools afloat, you know, we're thinking about closing schools, laying off teachers, doing all those other kind of things. Now we're looking at, how do we get more that we need? Not more just to have more, but more that we need. I think that's the important thing. If they're willing to allow us to move funds into areas that we need, one size doesn't fit all, you know, and having, and having a bill that produced this money cannot be totally inclusive of everybody throughout the United States, you know, we don't all need the same thing, we don't all have the same problems. But I think you've done a masterful job of keeping on top of it and making sure that we don't leave any money on the table, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'm sure he, and I'm sure he does too. That's not the point, it's not, appreciation's not the point. It's the fact that you can find ways to help us do what we want to do, and I appreciate that.
Let me just bring one point to that. No, I absolutely concur. I'm not, I know you hear the direction every time I don't understand what we're doing. It's, I know you do, and I appreciate that we have you and your staff, because otherwise I don't know how in the world any, we would ever figure this out. But, you know, we got an email this afternoon, which y'all know, I was tied up all afternoon, so I didn't get to see them, I'm just now seeing them, where a middle, a Cave Spring Middle School English teacher tells us the remediation is needed. It's, it's not, you know, this isn't stuff that I come in here and just think up, how can I, you know, talk about something? So, you know, these monies, if we have them available, you know, it's just frustrating that they won't let us do, in my mind, the extra that we need to do in the ways we need to do. So, you know, for what it's worth, that's, you know, that's the way I feel, and that's where I'm at. But I absolutely appreciate it. I'm not, it's just frustrating that, you know, we can't do it this month, but next month, you know, we can move it to another pot and we can do it, you know. So, anyway, thank you.
And if I might add, and you caught up on that email, I know you were busy today, and caught up on an email, she does, she's a teacher at Cave Spring Middle School, but she has kids in Williamburg, so she's twofold there, making sure that the kids are getting what they needed, and what she's doing where she's teaching, so.
But they know, yes, exactly. They know this, they've got kids in the schools, and they're a teacher, and we have heard this from many people, so. And keep in mind, we're one of the fortunate districts, you know, we've done more than a lot of these other districts have done. I still say that's no excuse for not doing anything and everything we can do to make sure these kids are caught up and brought back to where they need to be. Thank you.
All right, well, moving on, we do have, we received substantial savings when Mr. Terry purchased laptops and carts, so that was $363,000. We offset that by funding the entire summer program through the ESR 2. It was planned to try and get that into the application grant that we received. However, when we found we could stick it in here and then fund the years 2 and 3 from the new grant, that was the way that we had to go because of the timing of the grants. And then I spoke about the ESR 1, moving the funds back and forth because of the timing of the grant. So with all of these shifts, that will free up $701,103.67 out of the ESR 2 grant in order to help provide payment for the premium pay. So the same format is taken to look at the ESR 3 grant. On page four is the summary, and then on page five, it shows all of your details with the lettered tick marks. And some of these items you've already heard Dr. Nicely mention. So one of the first adjustments we'll make is to move seven of the IA positions, the Special Ed IAs, over to the general fund, and that will free up $793,603.79. We sharpened our pencils, and for the daily substitutes, we removed the laps from the beginning of the year because we didn't hire them until, start hiring them until October 1st, and so we removed the laps. And so we removed the laps that was naturally built in from, uh, the days that they were not working. Uh, we also went ahead and eliminated the last year for the daily substitutes. Now, there are more opportunities that we could build some of these items back in that I'll mention a little later. We redirected unneeded funds that were set aside for the, to put bus aids on regular education bu, uh, buses. That provided $489,840. We went ahead and performed a full payroll true-up on all of the other, uh, employees that are in this grant. Basically, what that means is, as of October 15th, we always run a payroll projection to see how much money will be spent to the rest, rest of the year. So we did that, and we also took out any employee that would continue working the next year or two under this grant and estimated that amount as well. And that true-up provided, uh, $196,882.49. We moved the third year of special education school coordinator positions to the general fund to free up $114,776. We reduced the virtual options, uh, in that last year by 100,000, hoping that we would not need that as we return to a, the, the more new normal. We limited, um, as part of the plan to attract the special education, uh, teachers and retain them, uh, the stipend, uh, for $2,300, uh, was, uh, designed to, uh, go towards those who are fully licensed, uh, as an enticement to retain the licensed, uh, teachers. That saved $31,349. We moved the contractual increase for the math supervisor to the general fund, which saved, uh, just under 8,000. And then the moves that I've already talked about with Easter Two, actually, we spent $832,698, um, to offset these costs. And the net of all of that will provide, um, just over 1.5 million in Easter Three, so that we could apply that towards a premium payment should the board desire. So the last page does provide the calculation for the, uh, premium pay. Uh, we looked at two options, a thousand dollar option and a 1,200 dollar option. So based on both of these options and the comments by the school board at the last work session to provide the payment to every employee, we took the number of open, of total positions on October 15th and removed the open positions to come up with, there were 2,166 positions that were filled. So if we apply that for the, uh, $1,000 bonus, it would cost us just over 2.3 million. If we apply that towards a 1,200 bonus, it would cost just under 2.8 million. After we remove, remove the, uh, or apply the funding from the Easter Two and Easter Three grants, which you can see in green on the table, that leaves the amount that we need to find out of the general fund, which we can do this using payroll laps for the $1,000 bonus, um, 99,458, or 565,749.38 for the 1,200 bonus. Now, when I ran the calculations on October 15th, we had a realized personnel savings of 322,000. We had, what that means is, the positions from the beginning of the year to October 15th that were not filled netted us that much money. So then if we look and we calculated how much dollars of our budget is held for all open positions, so the 120, that ends up being just about 2 million. So we are looking, if there are no changes and we can't attract more people using general fund dollars of ending the year with a, with a 2 million, 2.3 million dollar surplus as of right now. So I would feel comfortable recommending to the board, should it be their desire to provide a 1,200 payment, I would feel comfortable with using about, about a half million of personnel surplus because I think we will have enough to cover that by the end of the
And is, is there a date that they have to be employed by or?
That will be up to the school board.
Okay.
I just used these numbers because that was what was available.
What's, what's actual right now?
If I do, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Greenway.
So what was the thought process in the thousand versus 1,200? What, why those two numbers?
I was just going as hard as I could.
Okay. And feeling comfortable?
Yes.
Okay.
Going much harder than that would get us out of, um, any comfort zone.
The, um, approximately $917,000 is being moved out of the Easter Three funds back into the general, um, general funds. What's that gonna do to our general fund?
Most of those, pretty much all of that represents, um, open positions right now that we can't fill. For example, the IAs that we're moving back, we have 15 IA positions that we can't fill in the general fund. So we're just gonna move those other eight positions over, and that'll just leave us with additional positions that, that we can't fill. I mean, we're trying, but they're just unbuilt.
Can't hire.
Right.
So, Mr. Chairman, is it, we'll make this decision at our next meeting?
That will be on your timeline. We can bring respect for action, we can, however you desire.
This would be at our work session?
We could do the work session.
It's a possibility.
Chairman, can I have one more question?
Yes, sir.
So, um, also, you know, we're talking about positions that we can't hire. We know our COVID cases are coming down. Hopefully that stays that way. So contact tracing hopefully is coming down, right? And I know that our principals have been helping in a large capacity with that. We've also got 650,000 in here for contact tracing, additional nurse substitutes. Is that money that will be available as well?
Sure. If it's not used, then.
You don't, I mean, as numbers come down, I'm assuming we don't need the, the amount of folks. So that's money that potentially will be available.
Mr. Chairman, I know one of the questions, uh, I think Mr. Ray that asked the question about timeline, uh, this could be brought back to next Wednesday's work session if the board desired. Um, I believe, Ms. Peterson, you shared that, um, uh, you know, in terms of trying to, I, I know the board expressed earlier, board members, about trying to get it in before the holidays in terms of payroll. And I believe you said, Ms. Peterson, that if, as long as we acted with the next couple of weeks, we could get it in by November 30th payroll, is that right?
Um, if we acted before November 17th, we could pay it out in the November 30th payroll.
Thank you.
Perfect. No, that's good. That's good. Nice little.
So we'll probably look at it at the work session.
Think that's the plan.
Next board meeting.
Work session. You'll be there.
We're gonna call you in as a consultant if you're not.
Yeah.
You get paid as a consultant.
Incorrect response.
Well, I appreciate your, your hard work. I know this is something that, you know, the board requested, you know, we discussed back in September. So, uh, um, you know, I like this, this is something that we can do for, you know, for all employees. Because I know all our employees are out there busting, um, busting their tails, so.
Wonderful thing.
Absolutely.
So I did make a quick mention of there may be an option to recoup some of these funds. Um, at the work session, I have submitted a, an agenda item to, has a big packet of every Easter grant that we've got so far, plus the identification of five more Easter grants that we can apply for.
And I didn't understand the first two.
That's it.
That's why we have a season.
So that additional remediation money is right around the corner.
Yeah, that's Easter night. Easter night, too.
And it, it really is, though. VDOE has $61 million of funding that's only for addressing learning loss. And so we can, it's not an allocation that they have given to every school. It is, we apply for what we think we need, or we shoot for the shortage and apply for way more than we think we need. And then they'll, they'll look at all of the applications from all the school divisions, and they will make a decision of how much they, um, hand out to the different school divisions.
Are matching funds required for any of those?
Only for the HVAC.
Okay.
And I spoke with Mr. Lowe today, and we, um, he has a great plan to have the matching funds covered so that we can access the full HVAC funds that will be there.
So maybe, um, a way to ask this for remediation, and I'll let Dr. Nicely and staff figure this out, if it's even feasible. But if that be the case, I'd love to see us at the lower income schools, maybe the title ones to start with, to see if we could add, I would say, one person for, for these kids to come into for, for extra remediation, or if you do the necessary at other schools. But if that be the case, I'd love to give these title one schools some extra help. We've had those conversations, um, in some fashion, to make sure these kids that are at risk or that don't have the means to, you know, have tutors and, you know, what have you, that I don't hear stories about kids that don't know their ABCs in the first grade, you know? Those type things that we could help those, those schools with, you know, maybe a tug. And I don't know if that's the right thing, to add one more person, but maybe you have some ideas. I'd love to see us do that.
Chairman. You know, I, I agree with you that title one schools by their very nature of their identification have problems. But I would suggest that every school, elementary especially, has a problem, you know, with students who are not performing up to their level, you know? And it, and it's, at one time, we had 17 schools in Runup County designated as title one. It's down to about six or seven now. So that tells you that, you know, you've got 10 or 11 other schools that if you change the criteria, or if you look at it a little differently, you know, they could be, or at one time were, you know, identified as title one. And they have needs too, and.
Hey, I'm good, I'm good with all of it.
But to say, I'm, I'm with you. The need is there. It's a matter of, you know, uh, equity, you know? If, if you had to be a title one school to get the funds, then there are a lot of schools that are gonna have students and teachers who will be dealing with this without the funding that's needed, you know, to get the job done. So I would suggest that if we're gonna do that, and I, I, I agree we need to do it, but if we're gonna do it, let's cast the net with a sense of equity for the real needs of students in all of our schools, because they don't all attend title one schools.
Right. Oh, absolutely. No, if it's, uh, if it's a child of need in any of the schools that aren't title one, I absolutely, 100% agree. I think we can get those kids, and we've got the funds for crying out loud. You know, again, I go back to the CSA money from board of supervisors. I know we asked, have we heard anything about that? I don't know.
That was a million dollars.
Yes. Um, you know, and I, the last thing I want to hear is our kids are no further behind than the other kids in the other area. You know, that just about like sticking a knife in my heart. I don't care. I want all kids brought up. So, no, I'm good with that. Um, if we can get that, and we can add a person for these kids, and maybe that's all they do, are these kids that need remediation. I do think there's gonna be a few more in the title ones, but I'm good with all. I don't think any kid, any kid, no matter where they're at, should be left behind.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Good discussion. All right, 9.01, report by superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a, a few quick items. One, I want to, uh, congratulate one of our teachers over at Mountain View Elementary. We got good news. So this is Tracy Nielsen. She's one of our preschool teachers in the second, the two-year-old program. And she was actually one of the Virginia Lottery teacher winners. And, uh, staff from K92 stopped by just to give her that acknowledgement today. So it's just a great, you know, one little way to celebrate some of our teachers. I actually stopped by there today and saw her working with those, those two-year-olds and just seeing the gains that those, uh, kids are making, you know, with the, the staff there, it's, it's really incredible. So, uh, she, along with the winners that were recognized this evening from our Education Foundation for the Golden Apple Awards, these are, these are folks who are all well-deserving, but also represent, I mean, many other, uh, teachers and staff who are out there working really hard and doing, and doing great work. So just wanna appreciate our, our Education Foundation Board. These are all volunteer, uh, members of that board who represent, um, you know, various businesses, uh, in, in Runup County and in the valley, who volunteer their time to support the efforts of the Education, uh, Foundation Board and, of course, conduct, you know, fundraisers like the, you know, golf tournament, the backpack run in the spring, and, and rely on donations to, to do things like recognizing our teachers to the Golden Apple Award Program, also our classroom grant program. And those applications are open currently to any of our teachers who want to apply for, uh, classroom grants to, uh, uh, help out with projects in, in their, in their classrooms. And of course, there's the, the student scholarship program as well. So, uh, this evening, uh, we actually, the Education Foundation actually recognized, uh, the Golden Apple winners from 2020, uh, as well as, uh, 2021. So, uh, just appreciate the Education Foundation and congratulate all the teachers, uh, who are recognized today. Uh, want to thank our school board for your, uh, investment, um, in our schools, uh, related to our, our, uh, acute need for substitute teachers. Um, that, that, those efforts have already started to make a difference. I know I keep a daily track of our fill rates on that front. So, uh, you know, hiring those designated, uh, substitute teachers, you know, for the schools has made a difference, um, as well as increasing the, the sub rate. A little bit of lag time there to do background checks on people, but the applications are coming in. And, uh, this week, we were, uh, back up into the upper 80s and, and 90% fill rates, which we haven't been in all year. So your efforts there and investment has, has really made a difference, and I appreciate that. Um, and just lastly, just a shout out and thank you to all of our teachers and staff for what they do every day, uh, to take care of our kids and not only making sure that they're learning, but also just, you know, taking care of them, making sure they're fed and, and making sure they're in good, good, good places in our schools. I appreciate, uh, them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10.01, reported inquiries of board members.
Just wanna, as Dr. Nicely just mentioned, I want to congratulate, and I'm sorry I couldn't be here today for the Apple Award winners. That was, uh, wonderful thing that we had to get away from for COVID last year, and I think we did two years worth today. Yeah, so I heard, uh, some folks from, from our area, and I guess I'll share them with you, Mr. Linden. Got, got some awards, so that's nice to hear, and I think it's a wonderful, wonderful event where we recognize our teachers for all they do. Just wanna, a couple issues. I, I think the people that were here tonight and, um, speaking personally, I don't want to get into the, the politics of things, but I do agree that parents ought to have that choice, and they should, uh, they should always participate in their child's welfare, education, um, anything of the sort. So, so I thank you for being here and speaking on that matter. Also, thank you, and I forget your name, pardon me, but I think you're the one that called and, uh, was calling out. It was odd, because you were calling out of, I, I asked you which district you were in, and you said, uh, you were in another district, but you wanted to find out from all of us. So I, I appreciate you getting involved. I wish more people got involved to, to find out the, the answers to, to some of our, uh, you know, where we're at and responses and so forth. So that was nice. Last thing, we're going into, so can we get an update on the CSA money if we get a chance, just to see if they've given us some?
I've not got a response yet.
Yeah. No, I understand. I just think, you know, they can, I think they could give us a response. I know from, from talking to a couple of them this week, they're not thrilled with me, but that's okay. There's a lot of people that don't get thrilled with me. So, um, and I just want to say we're going into this last four or five days of election stuff, and, and I hope we'll keep it civil and respectful. And, uh, there's been a lot of nastiness and divisiveness and name-calling, and it's just got no place, uh, in our elections for that. And so I ask that we all remember and be respectful. Remember that, that all these families, uh, have, uh, all these. families have, all these folks running are willing to put themselves out there and they have families. And we need to be respectful of those folks. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My pleasure. Mr. Widen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to echo Dr. Nicely and Mr. Greenway's comments about the Golden Apple Award winners. Um, congratulate all those that, that were nominated. And tonight's event unfortunately was a show of itself. It was always one of the highlights of, of the year for us because we were able to get so many teachers together. And because of COVID, um, it was, it just felt a little bit different tonight, but nonetheless, thank you to the education foundation for everything that they've done with that. And, um, Mary Ann Nester, Bonsec teacher for 32 years, was the, was the 19, or excuse me, 2020 Golden Apple winner. So wanted to thank her there in my district. And then also Mandy Churchill down at Clearbrook. So, um, appreciate the progress. Mr. Lowe's not here tonight, but I appreciate the progress that I'm seeing over on the tennis courts at, at Northside. That's a, a long time coming, but it appears as though they may get done before the winter and be ready for the tennis teams to play on in the spring. And also, um, Tuesday's election day, no matter what your beliefs or, or thoughts are, I hope everybody gets out on Tuesday to, to cast a ballot for the people that they think belong in office, no matter whether it's on, on this board or anywhere in the state. So that's all.
Thanks, Ms. Widen. Mr. Weimer?
Um, as I was thinking about remarks tonight, I, I thought back to December of 1971, which is the first date that I was employed in Roanoke County Schools as a teacher, replaced Fred Anderson, who was elected the treasurer for Roanoke County. And little did I know, 50 years ago, Jan, in December, that I'd be sitting here tonight. Um, it's been an interesting road, uh, great journey, a lot of pauses. Um, and I leave this board probably after the election, well, we'll leave after the election, but probably within the next week or so, if it can be verified and the, and the circuit court can, can swear the person in. And I hope they do that as soon as they can so that the people in Catawba can be represented by the representative that they chose at the polls. Um, I want to thank the board, though, for taking the risk of allowing me to come back and serve on the board during this period of time while the people in Catawba have the opportunity to sort through the candidates and, and to make their choice. I, I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, I would say it's been a lot of fun, but you know, I'd be lying, but it has been informative. I have learned a lot. Um, someone asked me the other day, you know, who I was voting for, which I said, I've already voted, so it doesn't make any difference at this point. But I did point out, you know, they said, well, um, do you think that personalities and tempers are involved? I said, I wouldn't use the word temper, but I would use the word temperament. And I hope that when this election is over, that we return to a period of temperament where we can discuss ideas that may differ. We may have to deal with solutions that differ from what we want to do, but we do it in such a way that we continue to move forward as a school division and other offices as well, but as a school division, keeping the main thing, the main thing. And the main thing in schools is our children. And if we can keep the main thing, the main thing, then we will have accomplished everything that we could have possibly been elected to do. And I appreciate that. Tonight, when we were talking about the financial part of this, you know, you, you saw some monies that were in there for, um, social and emotional support for our students and teachers and staff, because all of our health, physical as well as mental and social, is important for this thing to work. We have a very, very, very dedicated staff who work hard every day, but it is harder and harder as the days pile up, you know, with the things that we're asking them to do. And I certainly want to make sure that every teacher, every staff member, every person in maintenance, warehouse, transportation, everyone associated with Roanoke County Schools knows that this board not only appreciates what you do, but we welcome the opportunity to do everything we can for you to make your employment better. Uh, I'm reminded of what was attributed to Winston Churchill when he said, "It's not enough to do the best you can do. We have to do what has to get done." And I think that's kind of where we are as a nation, where we are as a board, you know? There are a lot of things out there that we can't control. There are a lot of things out there that would separate us, but we've got to find a way, working together, to align ourselves toward the goals that we want. And in Roanoke County Schools, as I said earlier, it's what can we do to make the best possible learning situation for our kids? And I appreciate the opportunity to serve with you gentlemen. And with that, I'll, I'll bid adieu.
Thank you, Mr. Weimer. Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'd just like to thank Mr. Weimer for the professionalism and the knowledge that he brought to our board and he hit the ground running and was participating and giving us some history lessons on what's going on. So I really do appreciate what you've done for us.
Good job.
So, um, I'd like to comment on our speakers tonight. I know that, uh, Sven Zell, I had a nice conversation with you, a long conversation, and that was good. And, uh, you know, I, the questions were very, uh, challenging and upfront. You had, either had a yes or no, you, how you felt. So I thank you for that call and invite any other parents as well to, for their questions as well. And Mr. Brown, thank you for being here and sharing your views. And, you know, I think we all understand that parents have a choice to bring, to have their kids in public schools, private schools, and they have a choice on what they do with their child, whether or not they're vaccinated, whether or not things happen. That's their choice. And I think that's, to bring that forward in a very, in a professional manner, I appreciate that. So, uh, I'd like to also congratulate the Golden Apple Awards in 2020, as, uh, Mr. Linden said, Maria Nester in 2020, and it was different, and Mandy Churchill in 2021. And in conversations, we were just had a quote about Winston Churchill. Well, her husband is 16 cousins removed from Winston Churchill. Found out a little more history tonight, but, uh, I was trying to remember your quote so, you know, so I can, you know, carry that on. But anyway, uh, Mandy is a teacher at Clearbrook and they both are very well-deserving. We didn't, we weren't able to give a, two leases for cars this year because I asked and there's not many cars on the lot much, so...
You've got four or five cars. Could we use one of those?
The recent Corvette?
The Corvette would be, but I'm sure they'd rather...
Okay. Sounds good. We can work something out. Maybe an hour at a time, no, a week at a time or something. Thank you.
How about the board? Can the board, can we get it?
Uh, no. No. But, um, you know, and I, I do appreciate that event. As, as, uh, Mr. Linden said, it wasn't quite, uh, celebration, but we, you know, we, we were able to have it this year, so that was, uh, that was certainly good. And thank you, Chuck, for getting everything going and I know everyone that was organized, organizing. Um, I spoke with Harley. You know, we still have that four-foot, three-foot deep, four-foot wide hole at the track at K-Spring Elementary, uh, K-Spring Middle School. And I went by there the other day and now they put the cones down in the hole. So, I mean, you know, it's like, so I think we have a solution, but I'd like to make sure that we can find some kind of resolution before somebody falls in that hole. So, thank you. And if you can give me an update whenever you got it. Other than that, uh, you know, everyone get out and vote. This is an important, very, very important election. And I think, uh, it's awakened a lot of people, what's going on in this nation. And I think everybody has, wants to have their say in it. So please get out there and vote. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ray. So I'll just echo, um, you know, it's been a pleasure working with you again. Mr. Weimer, appreciate your, um, answering the call to service, you know, while, while the voters of Catawba can make their, uh, make their decision. Your expertise, your thoughtful questions, the amount of time you put to research and, you know, the way you come to a board meeting, uh, very prepared, just, you know, exudes your professionalism. So just really, I, I know it means a lot to me and, and, and the rest of, the rest of the board. So congrats again to the Golden Apple winners. Like Mr. Linden said, it was just nice seeing everybody, uh, again. So we, we did have a, uh, larger turnout in the past, so that's going to be my call to, you know, anyone out there that would like to, uh, make a donation to the Roanoke County Education Foundation. We would greatly appreciate, uh, that. That's not anything, you know, that's separate from the board. Um, you know, they do wonderful work from, you know, recognizing our teacher of the year to providing, uh, teacher grants, which right now we just opened up the application for teacher grants, so our teachers can apply for classroom grants. Um, Chuck, what's the deadline for that again?
November 15th.
All right. So all the teachers and staff out there, you have November 15th to apply for teacher grants through the Roanoke Education Foundation. And, uh, also, one of the biggest things is the, uh, student scholarships that they provide at, at, at year's end to the tunes of tens and, tens of thousands of dollars on a regular, uh, regular basis. So, uh, thanks for all the board members on there and all their, all their hard work. So staff, teachers, thank you again. Um, you know, Mrs. Peterson worked really hard to, uh, at the board's request several months ago to find ways that we can, you know, provide a, a little something extra for you for the end of the, you know, by the end of the year. So I was excited to see we were able to do that. And, um, you know, I have no doubt that we'll have, uh, full board, board support for, for that higher figure there. Um, so with that being said, meeting adjourned. Appreciate y'all.